Meeting will come to order. Tonight, we'll be letting the pledge by Steve Roberts and Larry Mitchell.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I failed to have the clerk call the roll. I'm sorry. Mr. Clerk, if you would call the roll.
Dave Abdallah, absent. Thomas Berry.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Margaret Horvath.
Here.
Joseph Kaczynski.
Here.
Ray Muscat, absent. Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton.
I move to approve the Order of Business July 11th, 2017, regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council as presented.
Second. Second by Councilman Kaczynski. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the June 27, 2017 meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
I move the council approve the minutes of the June 27 meeting as submitted.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item five, public hearing and comments on agenda items. Anybody have any comments on any items on the agenda? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda, item six, fund transfers and current claims.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry.
Motion to approve current claims 6-1 through 6-23.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kaczynski. Any discussion? Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 610 for Director Zimmer. This is a DTE Energy bill for $1,646.01. The invoice shows DTE electric damages at a property. Could you shed some light on that, please?
Does that say electric or does that say gas?
It says electric damages, sir.
I believe that was, we had a water main break and the driveway, the approach collapsed and took out their facilities.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 8A, reports from Mayor Dan Pileko, major and local streets' budget for the fiscal year 2017-2018.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry.
No city council concur and adopt the local and street budget for the year of 2017-2018 as outlined in Agenda item 8A.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 8B, also from Mayor Dan Pileko, conversion of the city's streetlights to LED lighting.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry.
I move city council concur and approve the conversion of the LED lighting for the lights indicated on the attached item Agenda 8B and authorize payment in the amount of $141,014, $413,000, excuse me, $141,013,013 dollars as outlined in 8B.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kaczynski. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
I'll let Councilman go first.
I was just going to say this, I'm really excited about this. This is great. I think the mayor can shed some light, no pun intended, on the lights that are going to be replaced. And I think the residents of the city are going to be pleasantly pleased to see what's coming. And I want to thank the mayor for making the effort and staying with DTE to get this done, even though you're on a deadline here. Thank you so much.
I wanted to thank you for your assistance in this project. These will be new lights replacing very inefficient lights on, the first phase will be on Ford Road and Telegraph. The lights are so inefficient that in one and a half years, the savings from the LED lights will actually pay for these new lights. So it gives you an indication of just how inefficient those vapor lights that we have on there currently. So, and then next year, we'll do a whole bunch more.
Great, great. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
This occurs to me about the efficiency that the mayor is describing. Has there been, Mr. Mayor, any engineering looksee as to the diffusion of the lights and just not replace where there are lights now, but expand the locations to be placed? Or is that more of an expense than the cost would allow?
That was not looked at. The way these LED lights are going to be configured is where there is lamp currently and rather than spreading it out, we were not told that we would be able to extract lights, but we'll get a better light, a more natural-looking light at a cheaper price for what we have.
It occurs to me too that as time goes on, there might be a possibility to place those in other locations where they might do a better job or more efficient job. But all said and done, if you get any recapture of expenses within 18 months, that's pretty phenomenal.
It is, it is.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, also from Mayor Dan Pileko, Crestwood High School Annual Homecoming Parade.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
I move that the council concur with the mayor and authorize the celebration of a homecoming at the Crestwood School on October 20, 2017 at 5:30 PM and that the concurrence of the police chief Gavin and fire chief Brogan will make themselves available with regard to any kind of service required at the time of the parade.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 9A, from Public Service Administrator Bill Zimmer, Johnson Controls Service Agreement.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry.
I move city council concur to renew the service agreement with Johnson Controls as outlined in 9A and authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kaczynski. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, from fire chief Dave Brogan, clarification of fire headquarters' LED sign payment.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
I move council approve the outstanding bill of $1,700 to Price Electric for an item that was not included in the original cost structure with regard to the new digital sign at the police headquarters, all described and detailed in 9B per letter of March 16,2015. This goes back a little bit. I understand that there was a balance that was not attended to when the cost structures were calculated.
You said our police headquarters, you meant fire, right?
I meant fire.
Support by Councilman Berry. Any discussion?
You listen well.
Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, from Corporation Council Gary Miatki, first reading of proposed ordinance.
C. No, wait. Nine C.
Oh, I'm sorry.
C.
From ordinance director Jack McIntyre, demolition change order.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Berry.
Go ahead.
Councilwoman Clayton.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman. I move to approve the change order for the demolition at 5128 Harding in the amount of $2,500 and authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign as outlined in 9C.
Second.
Second by Councilman Berry. Any discussion?
Might be well to explain the change order. There was a section of concrete that was masked from any view with regard to the original estimates and was not included in the calculation. So when they began to do their work, they discovered that there was some additional extra expense with regard to removal and carrying away the concrete pad.
Was the floor of the garage checked back there?
Is this the first reading thing?
We opened, opened a folder that they, that's when they discovered that.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 11A, from Corporation Council Gary Miatki, first reading of proposed ordinance H-17-04 pertaining to special assessments. Councilman Berry.
I move city council consider read for the first time the proposed ordinance amending Section 27-1 concerning definitions pertaining to the special assessments as outlined in 11A.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Clayton. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. The next item on the agenda, item 13A, business license renewals for Buck's Pub, O'Grady Irish Pub.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kaczynski.
I move that the two business licenses indicated in 11A renewal be approved as described.
Support. Support by Councilman Berry. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please state aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. That ends the regular business portion of our meeting. Is there any announcements from anybody at the table? Any announcements? Treasurer Riley, Don Riley?
The summer 2017 tax bills were mailed out. If you haven't received your tax bill, please contact the treasurer's office at 313-791-3410. The taxes are due by August 15, 2017. There's an envelope in the tax bill if you want to mail in your payment, or you can come to Dearborn Heights City Hall. We're open Monday through Thursday, 8 until 5. After hour payments with a check can be put into the drop box, which is just outside the front doors of City Hall. It's a slot that comes into the building. Or you can go to the Dearborn Heights branches of the Dearborn Federal Savings Bank. There's one on Warren Avenue near Inkster, and there's one on Telegraph just south of Dartmouth. Or you can pay online using a credit card or e-check, but there is a convenience fee to pay in that manner. So again, if you haven't received your tax bill by now, please contact the treasurer's office. Thank you.
Treasurer, thank you, thank you. Any other announcements? Our library director, Mike, go ahead.
Hello, council chair and mayor. Just want to talk about a couple of upcoming events at the library. First off, tomorrow, July 12, at JFK Library, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. And Saturday, July 15, from 2:30 to 4:30, at CK Library, Cupcake Wars is back on. Children and adults can decorate a cupcake any way they wish. Registration has completed, but many cupcakes are available still on a first-come, first-served basis. We got a lot of them. So cupcakes will be judged for fabulous prizes, so come on out and enjoy the fun. Next Tuesday, July 18, at 6:30 PM, join us at Carolyn Candy Library for a program on organization. Professional organizer Sue Porter will offer tips and suggestions to help you gain control over the paperwork mountain and relieve stress and anxiety. Wouldn't that be nice? So that's all for now. Thanks for your time and see you at the library.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you, Mike. Any other announcements, our clerk, Walter Persson?
It's four weeks before the August 8 primary. The absentee ballots went out bulk mailing last Thursday. If you have applied previous to this week and have not received it, contact us. You should have gotten it by now. Phone number's 313-791-3432. Any election-related questions, we are certainly available to answer, and we will keep you updated on any further election news as it happens.
Clerk, thank you, thank you. Any other announcements? Any other announcements from anyone? All right, hearing none. Any questions, comments, concerns from residents? Please come up to the podium, state your name and the street you live on.
I have three questions, so I'm going to speak very quickly, less than a minute on each, and give you an opportunity to respond. The first question, I think, belongs to Chief Gavin. At the recent Homeowners Association meeting, a question was asked pertaining to the incident on the evening of June 15, where there was a child, an infant actually, locked in a car at Gordon Food Services at Telegraph and Ford. And according to the local news media, in over 20 minutes, the police never responded, although 911 was called, and people are looking for an explanation. There has been no statement found in the media or on the city website since the event. Can you please respond to that? And let me tell you, I just want to go on the record as saying...
Direct your...
Oh, I'm sorry. It pains me to ask this question, because you know I'm a strong supporter of the police and fire, but it did come up.
So we received a call and a child in a car. It was at the end of the shift, wrote a call, starts, call come in approximately 6:23. We got the call, we logged it in. We got a call about 10:00 to 7:00, before the cars got there, saying that the lady got back into the car, the baby checked out okay, and she left. We did internal investigation. There was a slight error on the dispatcher's part. There's going to be some discipline issued. But again, we're right there at shift change, where cars are coming in, cars are going out, and we advise all our residents, sometimes there's a little delay in that time when you have shift change, when cars are coming in and cars are going out. So we handled it internally. There's no statement that need to be made. We don't make statements on that. We took the call and put it in computer, and the people that took the call went home at 6:30, and maybe all the information wasn't passed on to the next shift. So we handled it there, and the people called back and said baby in the car was okay. They talked to mother and they left before we got out there.
Okay.
Thank you, chief.
And yeah, the baby was in the car, the air conditioning was on. Sure, it's, you know, it's a crime to leave the kid in the car like that. But we had a little delay getting out there, so unfortunately, you know, we handled it internally.
Thank you, thank you. Chair, two more questions. Go ahead.
The next question relates to a statement that Councilman Coniston made during the June 22 League of Women Voters Forum, which seemed to imply that the purchase of Warren Valley Golf Course would include some future development. I believe the statement was that it may be taken down to an eight-hole or nine-hole course in the future, or something to that effect. And again, obviously, the communities or the subdivisions that butt up against Warren Valley, this is an important issue, and they would like clarification as to whether or not the current deed restrictions are going to be observed, which keeps it a green space and keeps it a 36-hole golf course, or if in fact, under this administration, now or in the future, development that would reduce, or let me change, let me restate that, development that would make it anything other than a golf course with a banquet center is being considered.
Yeah, I saw some comments like that on social media. I certainly don't remember, number one, I don't remember saying anything like that. Number two, what has happened is, Wayne County has said, "We want to sell the golf course. We would like to see it continue as a golf course." So the alternative was either they would sell it to whoever possibly the developer or the city would buy it. The mayor's office has negotiated a purchase agreement, and it looks like we may buy it. As far as the future plans, I have no inside knowledge of what's going to happen with the property.
Well, from the administration's standpoint, it's our, and I've pointed this out numerous times, it continues to be, I think it's two 18-hole golf courses there and a banquet center, period.
Okay, so there is no plan to develop even the front green space or anything else?
We're only looking at what is there currently, and that's what I've indicated, as far as I'm concerned, it would continue as.
Okay. Just again, people want clarification. The third and final issue that has been recently discussed, as I've been out and about in the community, involves the contract and going back to a five-day work week. And just because I've done some investigation, Michigan Municipal League and records and things of that sort, I'm just curious, I don't want to get in the situation where, here's a contract, we need a signature at this meeting without a lot of investment. There is a lot of concern that the raises, in order to get people to return to a five-day work week, may exceed the norm within the community governments in the local area or the state. And I'm wondering if there is any update on that, or if anybody who sits on the council has done any investigation, if you even know what the average raise is for...
When you say the contract, what contract are you referring to?
Well, the union contract is up in order for the city employees to return to a five-day work week, and the mayor has indicated multiple times that he has told them absolutely that's got to be a condition of this contract. So before a contract is given to you, and like, for instance, the MEA just recently signed with the Detroit School Teachers for a two-year, 7% raise, 4% and 3%, which is quite high. But before somebody says, "Hey, I haven't gotten a raise in five years, I think we should get 8%," I'm just curious as to what level of research and investigation the council has put for...
The Detroit teachers are represented by the...
By the MEA. Understood, understood.
Detroit Federation of Teachers, not the MEA. But as far as any contract negotiations...
I don't like to comment publicly on contract negotiations. I've told everybody that as part of the contract negotiations, I have, as mayor, made it very clear to the union that we want to have the opportunity to go back to five days. So that is something that is being negotiated. And the negotiations, there are other items in the contract that need to be negotiated, but it will be deliberated by the council in the appropriate time, but it's still in its early stages of being put together.
Okay, I would have thought that that would have come up this summer, and that's from a timing standpoint why I was asking.
One of the big difficulties, there's a state law that requires, and it's a good law, I think, I'm pretty sure it's state law, but anytime, anything deals with pensions, you have to get an actuary to give you the cost. And what, we're at a point, we've been waiting now for a few weeks, and we expect to wait a couple more weeks at least, for the actuary to give us the reports. And a contract is like a puzzle, and so when you put one item in, it may not fit if the other puzzle pieces, so it's all got a, the puzzle has got to go together to bring a package here, and that is a significant item, and that's what's holding it up.
Okay, well, and it's just, if you look at the state as a whole, the municipal governments on a yearly basis, the average increase has been less than 1%. So my concern is, again, as a citizen and as a professional in HR, to look at it and say, you know, I shouldn't see a 7% or 10% raise, and, you know, being aware and making sure that the research is done. So, one last question, and that is, are you aware of the letters that have been going out to citizens with regards to homestead tax and proving that your house is not vacant? Okay. Apparently, I personally received one about three weeks ago, and it was an official letter from here at 6045 Fenton that said, "Your house has been identified as a vacant home. You must bring us a copy of your tax return and a current driver's license, or we will remove your homestead exemption on July 10."
Well, I didn't get that letter. My house is owner occupied.
So is mine.
Don't you have a, you said you had a rental in...
No, this was my home. It was my plat, and it was my home. So I brought it in, you know, I took time off work, I came over from Commerce Township, and I stood in line with three other people that had the same question. And apparently, at some point in the last 60 days, the lady at the assessment office told me hundreds, like a couple hundred water bills came back marked from the United States Postal Service as vacant. And so, for exact words, "We did not have the manpower to review each one and determine if they were truly vacant." So we just sent the letter out, and we're making the citizen prove it. But my question, just from a pure business standpoint, is, first of all, now you've inconvenienced, let's say, 200 citizens, and then secondarily, if I come to the window and you spend five to seven minutes with me, and you actually have to talk to me, so that's going to take longer, you've spent the same five to seven minutes as if you just sat down and researched it before you sent the letter out. So I don't see the, I don't see the efficiency for the citizen.
You know, I would have to hear from the assessor, but that doesn't sound right to me at all, and I never got any letter or...
Actually, I couldn't think of another way to do it that would be more efficient than that. Let's mail them out and get them back.
There was a glitch at the post office. This is what they normally do, the assessor's office, because when we first heard about it, we went down. Jack and ordinance has been helping a lot with it, too. But that's exactly what they do. The school board sometimes, Crestwood, not school board, but Crestwood School, will also send those if, to match up, to make sure you own a home. It's state law that they do it, and that's how they've always done it, by the post office, and it was a glitch by the post office, so...
That's what the woman at the assessor's office implied. She said, you know, "We got like a couple hundred," so it was clearly a glitch on their part, and I'm just like, but doesn't somebody realize that 200 homes didn't suddenly become vacant in the last, you know, 60 days or the last water cycle?
Well, it's actually, it's quite possible. It's, because I think it actually goes by a cycle.
Wrap up.
And I'd have to go back by Tony, but I do know that we checked with them, and that is a standard practice that they've done. We always have a couple glitches, there's always like five or six of them, but this time, it was a glitch in the, sorry, a couple mistakes where somebody might have moved to Florida for three months and then came back, or didn't register with the post office, but this is, this was a glitch on their behalf.
Okay, and I'm sorry, but you said that that was a state law. Can you elaborate on that?
No, because I'm not the assessor, but the assessor says they do send it out to make sure that everybody's homesteaded, and they have to send that out if they find out.
No, I understand.
I can get more information to you.
I think, and again, it really was quite upsetting for many of the senior residents who received them, so if you could, that would be great in reply to the Homeowners Association.
Yeah, almost all of them.
I didn't get a letter, but if she got a letter, and she's a homeowner, and I'm sure she pays her water bill, how did she get on that list?
Yeah, they just said, the woman told me literally, a couple of hundred of these were marked vacant from the postal service and just returned to the city.
Then it was a mistake by the post office.
Well, but again...
We got a question in the post office then.
The question isn't that they came back marked that way, or that it was a mistake by the post office. I get that. I'm just saying that, you know, now you've made it the citizen's problem to prove something that they've already proved.
Well, how, let me ask you this, how would you have, how would you have resolved it?
I would have probably printed out new water bills and sent them out again.
And you know how much that would cost to mail them again?
And do you know how much it costs the 200 citizens to take time off work, make a copy of their tax...
She's standing there, no. Come on, this is an operation you're micromanaging right now. They did what they do best.
The assessor, or someone from the assessor's office here, but it...
And again, I understand you don't run the day-to-day operations. I'm just saying, if you were unaware of it, it was quite upsetting to hundreds of people within the community.
You're... She's... You're, she's, you're eight minutes.
Thank you.
I didn't speak for all of it.
I did stop it in between, by the way. Anyone else?
Yes. Just want to know who's the chairman of this...
If you get up there, you'll find out.
You just...
Just what?
You just listen to what I'm going to say.
Just what?
Okay, I had enough of you.
No, you know, you have had, you haven't had enough of me. You haven't had enough of me. I'm not done with you.
Listen, you want to take it outside, I'll take it outside with you anytime.
You want to go outside with me?
Anytime.
The chairman, it needs to be ordered, please.
I'll have to have him removed. I'll hold you in contempt and have you removed, Tommy.
You're not the chairman.
I'll hold you in contempt, be careful.
You're not the chairman.
All right, let's both settle down, please state your name and the street you live on.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here really on a positive issue, not negative issue. This is an offer from Elite Sport Training to renovate the ice arena. It has been submitted to the administration, I believe, since March. I came here before, and I spoke about the same subject, and I did mention that Hype is interested in doing the same thing. What I'm here for is asking, this is a very good project for a property owned by the city, which has been sitting since August last year, doing nothing. And it does not meet the standards of basically being used by the public, because there was no certificate of occupancy for it since 2006. I'm here to ask the administration, please, this is our property, this is city property, it can benefit the students of the schools around it, it can benefit the whole community, it can benefit everybody else, it will bring $75,000 a year in rent for the city, and this company is willing to spend $400,000 to bring that property up to code. And I do have pictures, but I forgot them in my office. If you need them, I can bring, I know you have them, Mr. Mayor, but if you need copy of this document, I do have six copies if anybody else wants it. I am asking you, Mr. Mayor, and ask the city council to please bring this to the table, discuss it openly, see if we can speed up this process, and if we can start the benefit from this. And I believe it's good that we have more than one person bitten on this job, because that will bring the best for our city, and that will bring the best for our kids and our schools. And I thank you very much, and I apologize to everybody and to the viewers if I have got upset a little bit.
Yeah, the, for the council's sake, Mr. Miyaki, Mr. Greibel, myself are meeting, interesting enough, I think, tomorrow morning, because you still have the former tenants, so we have to do, but we're very interested in bringing the proposals to you. We have to get that matter resolved, and then, so hopefully, in the very near future, we can look at a positive proposal for the ice arena.
I know that we still have, I'm sorry.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Horvath, and I believe there's several proposals, and there's a lot of discussion.
Is this proposal saying that we want to sell this property?
No, I've indicated to everybody, not for sale, only a lease, but both of them, both parties that are interested, and there may be other parties out there that we're not aware of at this point, have both indicated that they feel there's a great need to put a significant amount of money in there, and consequently, you know, they don't want a one-year lease. But tomorrow, first, we're going to resolve the case with the tenant who wanted to put the circus in there, and then, how can we then proceed? But we need Mr. Miyaki's input, so we do it legally.
Mr. Chair.
Councilman Berry?
I know that we have, we have a proposal on the 18th. Is that still going, are we still having that proposal on the 18th?
I'll find it. We're going to have a meeting on it, but it's all dependent on our meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, we may have a study session on the 18th, or maybe later, pending. We'll discuss, thank you, thank you.
One last thing, please, if you allow me, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I would appreciate when the time comes to vote on any proposal, if anybody has self-interest in it in any way, to abstain from voting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please get up and state your name and the street you live on.
Good evening, my name is Colleen Krasanek, and I'm a lifelong resident of Dearborn Heights. I'm here to plug the Dearborn Heights Police Department. I have not had a lot of use for the, not use, I have not had to use their services much in my lifetime, but my brother, Tim Adams, was a 30-year member of the Dearborn Heights Police Department, and my beloved father, Bill Adams, was an auxiliary police officer, and he loved every single moment that he served the city. I come from a family of public servants, I've been on the Crestwood Board of Education for 20-plus years, and I had reason, I was out of the area Sunday evening, and my mother called me very upset that her, there were lines down in her backyard. And so the first thing I always do when I have a problem is, I called Councilwoman Horvath, and I said, "Marge, what should I do? You know, my mom's got lines down, I can't get to her, it's..." And she said, "Call the Dearborn Heights Police Department." So, I went, "Okay, is it 2776777?" I don't know, I remembered that number, but I remembered the number, and I called, and I don't know who the person was on the other end of the line, it was an officer. He was so kind, and so nice, and so willing to help me. I said, "I'm not in the area, I can't get to her, I live only a half a mile away, but I wasn't home." And he said, "Well, do you know what kind of lines they are?" And I said, "No, I don't." And they went over there and checked it out for her, and made her feel so much better. So, everybody, support your police and fire, they're the most important people in this city, we have to be supportive of them, and let's all try to get along. I watch every city council meeting, and I've been very sad at what I've seen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else, please get up and state your name and the street you live on?
My name is Suzanne Todd, and I live on Academy Street. Mr. Chairman, Saturday evening, my husband and I came home from a very enjoyable trip to our little camper, and I was met with a robocall. And I listened to it, and my first instinct was to call the person who the robocall was about, but then I thought, "No, I mean, is she really going to be objective about this?" So what I did is, since I'm on the committee, reunion committee of my high school class, one of my jobs is to locate people, and I have used this one background, it gives background, it gives where they live, it tells everything. And so I decided to use that first, because I wanted an objective. Please let me finish.
Yeah, but we have nothing, this council has nothing to do with elections.
This has nothing to do with election. Please let me finish, okay? So I decided that I would, okay, I had to check this out, because there may be, maybe half a dozen people that do read my page, and I owed it to them to find out if this was indeed true. So all I want to say is, and I even paid an extra $20 to have a criminal background check done on Lisa Hicks Clayton, Councilman Lisa Hicks Clayton, and everything came back zero. That's all I want to say, is that I did, I went to an objective background company and had it, and what was said in that phone call was not true.
Mr. Chairman, you've got to step up. Anyone else, please get up and state the name and the street you live on?
Got a motion to adjourn? You got a motion to adjourn?
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Motion.
Yes, sir.
My name is Bill Bright, Arnold Street. I have another, a couple more questions about the Warren Valley Golf Course purchase. The city, when you were talking about due diligence, did that, would that also include, like, checking the buildings, the kitchen, making sure everything's, not everything is, you know, how much money would cost to put something in back in order? Golf cart replacement, is that necessary? Is half their carts not running properly, need to be replaced? Things of that nature, internal things, is that, my question is, is that part of due diligence, or is that not? It is.
It is, and it also includes the greens and any other work that would be needed to be done now or in the near future at golf courses.
Okay. The other thing that concerns me a little bit, there was something mentioned about in the last meeting, or at one time, about a stipulation in the purchase agreement that would not allow the course to be used for anything else, I mean, the purchase to be used for anything else than a golf course. And I don't think it was voted on or anything, but that was brought out as part, something they might, some of the council people or someone might want as part of the deal. Well, if you were to do that, you would be cutting your own throats possibly, in the sense that your hands would be tied. If that, 36-hole golf course, for number one, is a luxury around the state, which is, can be good or bad, you can argue any way you want, it's not bad. I grew up playing golf at Warren Valley, that's where I learned to play. But if it weren't, if it didn't follow through, I mean, if it didn't work out, it became too expensive, things of that nature, what are you going to do if you have that in there? You're going to have a nice field, or something of that nature. You might be able to make it into a park, but you'd have a nice field. So I don't see this council wanting to do that, from a business standpoint, where you tie your hands, where you, if something happens, you can't do anything else about. It just doesn't make a whole lot of sense on that. The other thing, I'm not so sure, and it sounds like I'm against selling the car, buying the course, but that's not necessarily true, but I'm not so sure why some kind of development is such a nasty word. Again, like I said, 36-hole golf, 36-hole golf course, that's kind of, you know, unique. But if you were to develop, if you were to develop part of the land, you have an 18-hole golf course, you could have an 18-hole golf course, and maybe a park, and develop part of the land, because I can remember over the years, I've heard people from the city, council or whatever, say that they'd give their right arm to have more land to develop, to create a better tax base, to help all the citizens, not a few, possibly. I know, like, the front of Warren Valley, I mean, the front part on Warren Avenue is, you know, kind of flat and wide open. I know some people that live on the golf course have some concerns about what they'd be looking at out the backyard, and I know there's flooding issues, but I believe the flooding issues are all in the valley. How anybody could build in there, I don't know how that would ever even happen. So I'm just not so sure that we should not keep an open mind to what we can do with that property.
So don't put a deed restriction on it.
Right.
I, Mr. Miyaki and Mayor...
There is nothing in the current purchase agreement that would provide for that, and if there was to be any decision that would end up being made, it should not be made within a purchase agreement with the county as a party. It would be something that should be decided by the city after the matter is closed, so that people can think about it and decide what they want to actually do without feeling like, "We want to end up putting this restriction in," and then five years from now, someone says, "Geez, that was an awful idea," but we rush to do it. So it's not included right now in the purchase agreement, I would advise against it. I don't anticipate that it will end up being something that would be in the purchase agreement.
Okay, and last, last but not least, I guess, just a point of information, you know, we're talking about Warren Valley, and what to do with the golf course and things of that nature, but just recently, the Hilltop Golf Course in Plymouth Township has lost $318,000 over the last seven-year period. The city is going, is looking into closing it and developing it in a residential area. St. John's Resort, that's out in Plymouth, they have a 27-hole...
We've been, we've been through all these deals, we've still not come to any conclusion. The document has not been sent to us on hard copy, and the mayor and his staff are looking at this. I don't find it necessary to get a rehash of everything that we already have been apprised of, and...
Well, you may have been... Sir, sir, what, it's a point well taken, you're getting into a lot of detail, we'll be glad to meet with you after the meeting, but your, the stage this is at now is, the county was insisting on selling the golf course, instead of developers buy it, we're looking at buying it, we're checking the property out, that's it. So I'll be glad to discuss it with you afterwards, but you're...
After we do our due diligence phase, then we're going to open it up.
You're more than three minutes is up.
But we need to find out what we're doing is even feasible right now.
Let's go, I'll sit. Can we get some police over to this side of the room?
Okay, well, I understand where you're coming from, I just, you know, because from a citizen's standpoint, we, you don't really hear that much, and you don't know what you're thinking or what you're not thinking, and I know you haven't decided yet, but that's why I'm bringing that up.
Yeah, we've talked about it just as much as you have, we're doing our due diligence, and we're waiting to find out the results of that. At that point, we can sit down and discuss it.
Yeah, we're glad to have your input, but we could be here for a while, if... All right, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, quickly, I wanted to point out something, again, that there has to be a very careful application of the rule against electioneering. Section 57 of the Michigan Campaign Finance Act, specifically subsection 1, sub subsection D prohibits essentially us using the space unless everyone's going to end up getting an equal opportunity who's a candidate. And when you start having people making even implicit remarks about something, you are essentially going to potentially invite someone to end up making rebuttal remarks in the same sort of fashion. So I would caution this body and yourself to be very careful about allowing people to engage in electioneering, even if it's done in a very subtle way.
Yeah, if everyone would please be aware of that, that's always been the law, that's always been the rule for our council meetings. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Robert Alott, I live on Rouge River Drive. I'd just like to make some remarks on what the last gentleman just said. I was golfing on the, on the course this morning, there's nothing wrong with those carts and things, he's just, people are fabricating on stuff. You guys are going to do your due diligence, you're going to see. I think language in buying this golf course to protect the people is why you guys are here. You're protecting the citizens of Dearborn Heights, it's your job, it's part of your job here. I think language to protect the people from profiteers and development and things like that in a golf course is important. It's important for the people, it's important for me, I live by there. You know, the Clearview Drive Manor is one of the oldest associations in the country, and it's, and survived there because of the golf course and the community there. And what, do you want to break it up? I mean, come on. Do you want to add more houses, build more stuff there?
We're not there right now, we've already decided.
So yeah, I just think, I just think language in there to protect it for what it is is important.
I agree.
Something to really review.
It's a large purchase, and there are a lot of details, and we have the attorneys working on that.
Well, the price is a steal, I think everybody knows that, so it's good.
Thank you. Well put. Anyone else?
Got a motion to adjourn?
Report. Good evening, everyone.
Support, good evening.